Individual with liberty of choice.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sitting in the chair of both of you. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
You look better.
Mrs. Davis?
Really? Your color is better.
Mrs. Davis? Here.
Mrs. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls is here. Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Oh, Mr. Long? No. Mrs. McGrattan? Mr. Sebelia?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Seven here, two absent.
Okay. At this time, we have American Ambulance to give a presentation. Mr. Greg Allard will be giving us a report. Thank you for being here.
We're welcome. Do you have copies of the report?
We do.
Excellent. So I'm just going to go through a quick review of the report that I prepared for you. And the first page, really, the titles will speak for themselves, and this is the locations that we responded to. And we split the town into the Gales Ferry section and the Ledgerd section. And you can see the percentages that are there. Fifty-nine percent of our responses were to the Ledgerd section, forty percent to Gales Ferry section of town, and one percent, which is actually equal to fourteen, responses were outside of the community here to your neighboring communities. The destinations that we transported, the patients that we picked up, were here on the chart. L&M was a resounding popular favorite here. Four hundred and thirty-six of the transports went to L&M, two sixty-three to Vacus, and then the remaining to Pequot and to Westerly. And the total number of transports we did within the first year of our service here was seven hundred and twenty-one. The busiest time of day is from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in the morning. We did sixty-five transports that day, and it carries down in the chart there. Eleven to noon is sixty-three, twelve to one fifty-two, and it goes down. So it's definitely during the day, kind of the morning, mid-morning, right till noon time, where we have our busiest time of day. The highest number of requests that we did in one day was twelve, and that was on March 25th of the year. We did twelve transports on that one day. The busiest days of the week, if we had to pick one, would have to be Wednesday. It's only because it's a percent higher than any other day of the week. It's pretty evenly spread out. That is not the case in other communities in which we work, especially in Norwich. Wednesday is not the most popular day, but it happens to be here within your community. The number of transport, or the number of requests that we got altogether, seventy-six percent of the time ended up in the transport, twenty-four percent of the time it ended up in a refusal. And that could have been while we were en route, or it could have been something that we arrived on scene, and then the patient then refused to transport or didn't really need to go to the hospital.
Is that typical?
That's not out of the ordinary. That's a typical percentage that we see. Yep, that is definitely typical. The next page shows the most common types of calls that we were called to here within the community. Sick person is kind of a generalized label that the dispatch centers give, something that they can't really label. So a sick person is very common, that it's the most common type, and that was a hundred and twenty-nine. Difficulty breathing, ninety-four. Falls is ninety-one. That's something that I think we could work on within the community to prevent. If we work with the Visiting Nurse Association, other members of the public safety group with the fire department members that we work with, and create some sort of a more robust fall prevention program, I think a number of those, we might be able to prevent. The average age for the falls is seventy-four. So if we go in and we can do a simple home inspection or follow-up after the fall and do some sort of thing with the folks, we might be able to prevent some of those calls from actually occurring here within the community. The, this was another astounding kind of a number, that it was actually fifty-fifty within the actual number of patients, male to female. Fifty-fifty, split right down the middle. Never seen that before. I don't think we could do it twice. But that's the way it rolled out for us this year. And the average age of all of our patients was fifty-seven for the entire community. This here is an important piece that I think you'll find interesting, is our response times. Seventy-five percent of the time in our responses, we were less than ten minutes. Only two percent of the time was, you know, between that ten minutes and fifteen minutes, and three percent of the time was greater than fifteen minutes. There's a variety of factors in that, but primarily the closer ones, obviously, we're getting too sooner. There are some parts of town where it does take a little bit longer from where the ambulance is stationed to respond to, and it could be that we had multiple responses within your community at the same time. We average, our expectation that we set on our crews is we want them out the door within a minute of time. That doesn't always happen, but that's our expectation of them. You know, there's things that do prevent us from meeting that, but that's something that we set on all of our crews. As I mentioned before, the number of times that we have multiple ambulances within your community could also lengthen some of those response times. There was fifty-six times in the community where we had more than one ambulance responding to emergencies, whether it be the same emergency, a car accident, or it could have been multiple emergencies in multiple locations. So fifty-six times throughout the year that we had more than one ambulance within your town responding. In addition to doing that, we participate in any other number of events that we get invited to, or we kind of, you know, ask to be part of. We did a number of kids camps this year through the Parks and Recs Commission. They invited us to come over and do some education on what it is that we do, and tours of the ambulance, and stuff like that. So we did that through the kids camps, through the Parks and Rec. We were over to the Senior Center twice. I was there once myself, spoke to a group, talked to them a little bit about us and being in town, what that meant to them, and how that would work. And another one of our, members of our management went over just recently and filled in last minute for somebody that canceled, and talked a little bit more about a few other emergency-related topics. We did an emergency manager town presentation, where, you know, members of the, I think there was a library, some sort of relation with the library there. We did that. I went and did that. We'd done touch a truck programs, the trunk retreat, participated in the light parade, the cycle race. There was a major drill that we took part of here in town. We've been to the farmer's market and gone to some of the local football games as well, just as, you know, a standby, kind of a, being a good community member as we should with a, as an emergency responder for those types of situations. So that's my presentation. I'll answer any questions you may have, otherwise.
The number of missed calls was?
Zero.
Wow.
We missed calls.
That was my only question.
Yep. Zero. We did not miss any calls, and we did not require mutual aid to come into the community at all for us.
That's impressive.
Good job.
Thank you.
Is there anything about Ledgerd that's different than other towns?
No. Each town has its own unique, you know, geography and locations where there's more population or another, but I don't believe that there's really anything unique. And I'll look to my partner back there to say anything that you can think of.
Just that fifty-fifty thing?
Fifty-fifty is very unusual, yeah. I could not believe that when I saw that. We actually had to run the numbers twice, just to make sure that that was accurate. Fifty-fifty is very unusual, very unusual.
The thing about the?
It varies. It really, one way or another, yeah, but not fifty-fifty, yeah.
The thing about the falls is really a good point, because I've observed, you know, you'll have folks that are, you know, eighty-five years old, and they're in great health, and then they fall, and it just goes downhill from there. And boy, if that could be prevented, that could make a huge difference.
Yeah, and there are fall prevention programs out there that, you know, we don't have to create ourselves. We could look to as guideline or base, and then work with, like you said, the Visiting Nurse Association, and even the fire departments, you know, and they can follow up after we go there for an emergency, and follow up with them and say, hey, we realize that, you know, you felt maybe we can help you with some stuff that they could do, you know, whether it's floor mats, or grab rails, or different things.
So following up on that, then, the falls, because there's certainly a large number of them, is there a typical cause?
Well, it could be that there's definitely something that they're tripping over is a significant hazard, but then there's always the medical side of it as well.
Sure.
Some of those things we can't necessarily avoid, obviously, helping them get the care that they need. But if there's trip hazards or fall hazards, you know, there's animals, there's, you know, the throw rugs, there's just other, just clutter, whatever may be in the home that they might be able to free themselves of, that they might not necessarily think of.
Sure. Any other questions? Yes, Fred?
Last quick thing I'll add. When we issued the RFP, we said approximate number of transports per year was seven hundred and five, and the total was seven twenty-one. So I'd say we nailed that in terms of what we thought and what it was.
Good. Well, thank you very much. This is certainly an excellent report, and we're very happy to have you here, and let us know if we can do anything for you in the future.
We will.
Thank you.
Let us know if you need anything from us. We'll have to be part of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Are there any resident and property owner comments at this time? Committee commission? Yes.
Good evening, Nate Woodie, 778 Longco Road, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission. So first, they already left, but I just want to say it was about one year ago that American hauled me to the hospital, and so they were fast response time, their staff were friendly and efficient, so if they still hear it, thank you very much. So from the planning and zoning side, two things to discuss with you tonight. So first, you have a bunch of appointments from us, and so we lost Ed Lynch finally, after I don't know how many years in reappointments of service. We could finally not keep him around anymore, so I just wanted to thank him for all of his service. It was great having him around. He's a loss, but we'll move forward without him. And so with his leaving, I've asked Mr. Marty Wood to step up from his alternate role to a full-time role. Mr. Wood's been a commission member as an alternate for several years now. His attendance is excellent. He's gone out of his way to attend the Yukon Land Use Academy training. He's gone to the Connecticut Bar training, and so he comes well-prepared for that. Mr. Mogle also had to resign because of some issues. Will miss him as well. He brought a lot of energy and alternate viewpoints to the commission, and so we'll really miss him as well. That left us with two openings, both of which you have recommendations for tonight. You have Ms. Ganlon, who we got to know on planning and zoning when she came and yelled at us about an application coming through. But when she did that, she, obviously, she came as an expert. She knew how to argue the zoning points of the application, not just say that we're wrong. And so that's rare, and so we immediately noticed, you know, this was someone who was competent. And so I got to know her a little bit. She comes to us with a master's degree in architecture. She's just finished a fellowship in urban planning, and so she comes to us as someone who has already read all of our regulations. She knows what the POCD is. She knows the difference between subdivision and zoning regulations. So, you know, she's a great win, so I highly recommend her. The other points we have here, I don't have as much experience with, but I'm happy that he comes from ZDA. So he's been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for quite a while, so he already knows what zoning is, and so he also comes to us with some expertise, and so I happily recommend all three of those, those changes.
Thank you for that. That makes her job much easier.
Yeah, thanks.
That's what I'm here for. That's what you said. The second item is, last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded on to you a updated POCD. So the POCD, as I think all of you know, and I think most of you have been through this process before, the POCD is our sort of long-term master planning document. And so the POCD exists to provide a framework for cohesive development of the town, to try to promote prosperity and environmental health as the town goes forward. We try to make it as factual as possible, so we try to base it on data. We try to put actual deliverable goals in there and metrics, so that we understand whether or not we've moved forward or not. So that was forwarded to you last week. We had originally scheduled the public hearing for January 9th. There was some squealing from both you and Cog, that because of the holidays, that time was cutting it a little bit tight. So I relented, and so we are going to reschedule that for February 13th, so you have another month in there to respond to that. So we ask for your comments. We will have a public hearing in planning and zoning. You guys can have your own public hearing if you would like on that, but I hope that you guys at least do read through it, provide us any comments. The sooner you can get that to us, the better. I know most of you have not looked at it yet, and so.
You'd be surprised.
Okay, great. Well, so if you have any questions or comments about it, I'm happy to talk further now. You know, I had sort of planned that I would probably come back in January if you'd like. I'm happy to talk about it now if the council would prefer.
Why don't you come back in January? Give us all a chance to, I mean, I actually started reading it, but I did not get through. I was going to give the speech tonight, so again, thank you for reminding everybody to please read it. Because it's important.
Great. And so as people are reading, the entire document was not redone, so we did not update the economic development and road section. Those two kind of go together, and the reason we set those two aside is we are hoping to get a consultant in in the next couple of years to really help us with that, because I think that's something that we really need outside expertise to help suggest what we ought to do there, instead of us trying to do that on our own. So those were left untouched on this round, and so hopefully in the next couple of years we'll be able to revisit that. All other sections, which means housing, land use regulations, open space, agriculture, community services, all of those have been updated. So definitely take a look, gather up all your questions. I'll come back sometime in January and do my best to answer any of those questions, and we'll go from there. So thank you very much.
Very good. I did have a quick question.
Please.
So the process you went through, you've been, you've had public hearings. Is that correct?
So, no, we have not had a public hearing. We have had public workshops.
Okay.
So we have had two public workshops to get outside, to get residents' input on what should be in there and what shouldn't be in there.
Okay, and that was my question.
Yeah.
My question was going to be, besides the typical cast of characters?
Yeah.
Did you have input from other residents?
So, very little unsolicited input.
Okay.
So, but I will give the spiel, so we've got input from the Historic District Commission. So thanks to Vin Gaddino, that whole commission provided input on several sections. We got input from the Conservation Commission, so they helped to craft the updated open space section to it. Particularly, I have to thank Mr. Morelli, who chairs Ledgerd Conservation, because not only did he help with the open space, he also provided the initial draft of the agricultural section, which Mr. Mogle then updated. So we've gotten a lot of input from other commissions on the town, but from outside residents, we've gotten relatively little input. And so we'll certainly advertise the public hearing in February, which is sort of the formalized process.
Sure.
And the statute says that we kind of have to do it that way. We can't do a public hearing before we bring it to you, so we're kind of obligated to do it that way, which is why we did the informal workshops.
Fred?
Yeah?
Any other questions? Yes?
I just want to thank all the members of Planning and Zoning. It's hard work, as Mr. Woody mentioned, they get yelled at a lot, and I want to thank you for your leadership. It's excellent, and gives me a lot of confidence in what Ledgerd is doing with its land. So thank you.
Thank you, and, you know, I think we're pleased with the product that we brought to you guys, and so we hope that you guys will find that we're moving in the right direction there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Any comments of town councils at this time? Yes?
I would like to thank Mike Washington for the time that he served on the council. Going to miss you. I've been, it's been a pleasure to work with you, I'm Andrew, and your insight's going to be missing.
Nothing will escape so easy, you know.
I'll be hanging around. We're going to get you back.
Any other comments?
Ditto.
Yeah, I was going to say, you stole all of our thunder.
Well, thank you.
I wrote something down. What? No, it wouldn't be in that there. Okay, so if there are no other comments, entertain a motion for the public hearing minutes in the regular meeting minutes of October 23rd.
So move second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any corrections, additions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Communications referrals. It's not really a referral, but Kevin, is the ordinance, the land, the ordinance that Steve is working on still, what ordinance is that?
The road ordinance, ordinance forty-five.
Yeah, is that the one that talks about snow in the street?
No, no.
Which is the one I'm talking about?
I think it was four hundred dash zero zero two.
Okay, I mentioned to Steve tonight that in the ordinance about obstructions on the towns right of way, it talks about snow, but it does not talk about leaves, and we should add that. So I think he still has it, that he's working on it, but if you just kind of make a note of that, he made a note as well, so. Okay, subcommittee liaison reports. Admin?
Admin met tonight, and we have a slew of appointments and reappointments on the agenda.
Okay. Any questions for admin? Finance?
Finance met tonight in a special meeting, and we talked about the track and field project, which is, the estimates came in over budget, but we're not going to move on that tonight, but we do have a request to come up with some additional money for that project. So we're going to think about that and not move tonight.
Any questions for finance? Yes?
This will resolve me from doing a report later on, but would they consider doing this project in two phases, one this fiscal year, one next fiscal year, to get the field we want?
We didn't ask that question, but keep going.
Well, we have, we have the pile of money now. Was it two million?
One point nine.
One point nine. It's got one point nine now. Go to contractors, say, let's work these numbers backwards. Instead of me telling you what I want, and you tell me how much, I'm going to tell you how much I got, and you tell me what I can get for that. And we get to that point, as long as we're inside the track, because you don't want to cross that track with equipment to do something else inside the field. So if we can get a lion's share of the work done for one point nine, come back next fiscal year, get all the outside stuff taken care of, I don't know what the breakdown is for the cost, but you can do, well, to coin a phrase, the groundwork.
Yeah.
For all the additional stuff on the outside, it might come under to one point nine. Be focused on the track and the field.
Yeah. And then.
So knowing the very little that I know, which is based on what we were told tonight, the big issue is grading that whole field, and the grading starts at the bleachers on the high school side, it goes all the way under the field, the track, all the way to the new bleachers, and that's a big issue, the grading, and they're talking about a bowl which has to be filled in. That's all I know, but it sounds like we have to address the grading and the leveling whole at once.
When they do, then, I would assume that they're going to put new drainage in, and that drainage, I don't know how it doesn't impact the track itself.
Yeah.
You'd have to cross the track at some place, or pay a premium to go underneath the track as a warning system.
But what I'm suggesting is do, from the upper end of the track, inward towards the field, and not do anything on the outside this fiscal year, to see if that brings us under to one point nine.
Yeah, but by not doing that work, does that?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the plan.
Inside, of course, that's the problem.
It's a question to ask. I think it's a valid question.
So just so you know, we're five hundred and nineteen thousand, they're five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars short. That includes not one penny for contingency. So that's what we're dealing with. On Monday, the mayor, myself, Bill.
Marshall.
Marcia, chairman, favorite, and the superintendent are going to meet. So certainly we'll bring that idea, and anybody else has any ideas, let us know, and we'll bring those and ask those questions. Okay? Anyone else? All righty. Is that it for finance? Okay. Land use, Kevin?
Land use, no, we have no report.
Okay. Liaison reports at this time. I'll start on my right. Anyone?
No.
Bill?
No.
Left?
I just gave mine.
Okay. I actually, I actually had one liaison report, although I'm not the liaison, but I just wanted to mention the senior housing and the food pantry. For a number of years, we've always talked about how there would be nice if there was good collaboration between the food pantry and senior housing, and today we had two requests for deliveries, which is something we have always wanted to do, but now, thanks to the new director and to Mary Beth, we've been able to make that happen. So, because we always felt that there were, there are more people in town that have a need for the pantry, that aren't taking advantage of it, and that's certainly an area where we think there are people, and they're very proud people, there's just no question, but we have two deliveries that are going to happen tomorrow, and we're kind of really happy about that, so.
Great.
Liaison report I have, well, I guess Parks and Recs would be the light parade, which is on, does anybody know off the top of their head?
Sunday after Thanksgiving.
Sunday after Thanksgiving, and as you all know, see, nobody here is new, so, but we always show up with our funny hats, and Mr. Washington, you are certainly welcome to join us.
Actually, the new council won't even, they're seated the following day, so.
Oh, so we really expect you.
Year off again, Mike.
You walked with us last year, didn't you?
That's December 1st, December 2nd. They changed over.
That's right. Well, you could do it again. And Mr. Bronner, would you make sure you, that the board of ed knows that, you know, funny hats, noses.
I will remind us all.
Lights, you know, that kind of thing.
Bring Larry.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, give me my hat.
Okay, report of, report of the mayor, Mayor Allen.
Okay. So as you probably recall, we lost three dispatchers some time ago. One took an administrative role, one moved to another town, and I can't honestly remember what the third did. But we, we put out a request for filling those roles. We got tremendous response. We hired three new dispatchers, Nashira, Abby, and Stephen. They were trained up very quickly, trained, trained both in, not just practical, but with computer work, too, and then they sat with Paula Smith, our lead dispatcher, and they worked very quickly, and now they're all working now, filling, filling roles and filling shifts, and they're doing a fantastic job. So we didn't miss a beat on that, which was great. The council of governments had a special meeting regarding waste, specifically regarding recycling. That's something that seems to be coming up more and more, that towns that had it as a revenue stream are now seeing it as an added expense. And closer to home was Montville, where they were receiving a little bit of revenue. Now it's costing them, I think around seven hundred thousand dollars a year more, based on their newest contract for what recycling is no longer providing. But this, this presentation came from a Conservation Law Foundation, an attorney named Kevin Budris, and he had some really incredible facts that he had to share with us, but some of it, as an example, sixty-one percent of the recycling stream is paper. So if we can continue to recycle paper, that provides a lot more in terms of reuse. Glass and aluminum can be recycled virtually forever, but we don't have a good system to recycle glass. So the problem that we have, even though it's a tremendous product and you can recycle it countless times, we don't have bottlers in our area. We don't have bottlers in the Northeast anymore. So what Willimantic Waste does now is all the glass goes on to either tractor trailers or rail cars, and it gets shipped to South Carolina, where they have bottling plants or rail cars, and it gets shipped to South Carolina, where they have bottling plants and reuse. So there's a lot that needs to happen there, but one of the key points was that this Conservation Law Foundation is really advocating for a change in the Connecticut Bottle Bill. That we're at five cents a can or bottle now. We have about a 32% redemption rate. But Michigan and Oregon, who have 10 cent redemption rates, are at 90 and 92% redemption rates. So, you know, I told them, I said, look, I remember picking up cans and bottles when I was a kid for a nickel a piece, and I'm not a kid anymore, so maybe that needs to change. But they're advocating for that, and they're advocating for wine bottles, and they're advocating for the mini bottles, that I know Andra did a fabulous job picking up one here along your road. And you know what? You might come out of it with a paycheck next time. If they can get a dime a piece for them, you might have 30 bucks to put in your bucket.
We'll have kids along the side of the road picking up nip bottles.
Yeah, exactly. So I also presented the Eagle Scout Award for Jack Mello. He was a young man that did the really nice bench and the planters down at the senior center. That was on way back at the end of October. I spoke for the State of the Town meeting. That was a meeting we used to do with the town of Groton and the city of Groton. And then, for whatever reason, maybe they didn't like me or whatever, they split it off. And so we did the State of Ledyard, and then Groton did their own thing. But we did that at Holdridge's, which was in the greenhouse. It was beautiful, small turnout, but it went well. And I recruited a new person to be part of the town, which is the newly retired commander of the subbase. So he's going to be seeking a role in town, and we will welcome him on boards and commissions and whatnot. Our pension audit has been completed, and really great news is our funded ratio now is almost 84%.
Wow.
So we're up from 77.98% to 83.71. So we're in really, really good shape on that. And the other advantage for that is it's going to provide a lower level of funding for the upcoming budget year. So to still be on track and then some, we'll be able to fund that slightly less. The SCARA report for October came in for tipping. We had 554 tons for October, but what that really means is it was 39 tons under the three year average. So we very consistently, over the course of the year, with the exception of July, we have very consistently been under the three year average, month after month. So I don't know what we're doing with our trash, but we're certainly not increasing what our tonnage is, which is very good, especially since the changes with recycling. Our AES is retiring, Russ Shaw, as you know. End of December, that position is posted. It's a 25 hour a week position. The pay is between $31 and $35 an hour, plus benefits. We are looking for somebody that has communication skills, somebody that might have some emergency management type of skill. But you're looking at a role that's a $40,000 to $45,000 a year position for 25 hours a week, and it does require some, the state does some drills that we participate in. There are also drills that occur with the American Styrenics facility. But that's a role that we need to fill in the next month and a half. So if you know somebody that has those type of skills, possibly a retired Navy person that has some leadership role, that would be a great person to send our way for that. And then the last thing, I just wanted to congratulate everybody that ran. I think, you know, it was an excellent campaign year for everybody. It was nice to see that people were nice, you know? People ran clean elections. We didn't get, you didn't get to read that in all the towns, but, you know, I'm glad that we weren't one of those towns that were above the fold in the day for slinging mud. So congratulations to everybody.
And congratulations to you, mayor.
Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? None.
What is going on with the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
What is going on with the Duclaw property, Styrenics?
Not a lot. We would love to see something happen there. As a parting gift, Dow gave American Styrenics in Trinseo a dollar a year lease for 75 years. And it kind of diagonally cuts across the property, so it takes most of the waterfront, if not all the waterfront, and the rail area and the deep water port. So the area that's left for somebody is the stuff that's really up at the top. So when you, if you were to go down the driveway, you've got a site on the left that's up, that's, they demolished the building, but the concrete pad is still there. And then you've got a site on the right where they cleared more recently on the north side of that, I don't know, that Lake Nova, I think it was called, that pond that they used for fire suppression. But that's really it. And so the people that have expressed interest in that site wanted the deep water access, and they're not getting it so far. And they would also love to have the rail access, and we're kind of stone malled on that one, too. So we got to wait about another 71 years. And, no, actually, the more likely scenario is that their business model will change at some point in the probably not too distant future, and when it does, they may not have a need to be there anymore.
So I've said for years, it'd be a great place for a power plant.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
So how about this, the retired commander of the subbase for the emergency management director?
He could be a great person for that, absolutely.
He's probably not looking for a job.
Well, you know what? I'll ask him.
Good, good. Okay, let's see. We have no old business. Is there any one that has anything to add under new business?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add a motion to authorize the Board of Education to expend $40,000 from account 210-70101-28250, BOE CNR Reserve Account, for the replacement of hallway flooring in the Gales Ferry School.
Okay, and this item will be added as number 11.
Give me a second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Moving on to the consent calendar, anybody have anything on the consent calendar they would like to have removed? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, and that will bring us to item number eight under admin.
I move that we appoint Mr. James Harris R., 8 Whipperwell Drive, Gales Ferry, as one of Ledyard's representatives to Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, SQUAW, for a two-year term ending August 31, 2021, to fill a vacancy left by Mr. Norris.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
So, you know, within the agenda, Roxanne always attaches the letters of recommendation that come from the committees. And, you know, I'm looking to see that this is somebody who is, has some experience, is a good team player, and so.
Good. Any comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move that we appoint Mr. Ernest W. Disco, R., 180 Whalehead Road, Gales Ferry, as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending October 31, 2022, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Mogul.
Second.
So.
I think we were well covered.
Ditto.
Ditto, yes. Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries.
I move that we appoint Ms. Katie Scanlon-D, 429 Colonel Ledyard Highway, Ledyard, as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, to complete a three-year term ending December 31, 2020, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Wood.
Second.
And again, Mr. Woody made your job easy. Rock, any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move to authorize the Board of Education to expend $40,000 from account 210-70101-28250, Board of Ed, CNR Reserve Account, for the replacement of hallway flooring in the Gales Ferry School.
Second.
So you'll see in the third attachment under this item called Gales Ferry Hall Floor, there are pictures of the vinyl carpet tiles. The school is 20 years old, the tile life is expected to be 15 years old, and sure enough, they're cracking and buckling, and the school needs to replace them. They did plan for this, they do have the money and their capital. They want to do it sooner rather than later, so it's in next year's capital. But we want to get it done over the Christmas break.
Any questions?
John?
What are they replacing it with?
Oh, good question, thank you.
That's a good question.
They got bids for vinyl carpet tile and polished concrete, and they're going with polished concrete. And polished concrete is less maintenance, and I assume it lasts forever because it's concrete, it's not VCT, so, yeah, and it looks great.
Yeah, it's okay.
Any other questions?
Guess it's a matter of luck.
It's just concrete.
I think it looks great.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Could you help me with something, because I confuse myself really easily? On my paper, I have approval under admin for Mr. Harris, Mr. Wood, and Ms. Scanlon. On the computer, I have Mr. Harris, Mr. Disco, and Ms. Scanlon. I don't think we made a motion for Marty Wood. There should be four people.
Right.
He was in the consent.
He was in the consent.
He was in the consent calendar.
No, I think I moved him. Well, we should do him, too, so.
Hmm?
Can we just add him? We should do him, too.
Yeah, he was not in the consent calendar.
Yeah. I think I.
Because we only, just to clarify, we only put in the consent calendar reappointments. And because he was moving, he's in, so we did, actually did not vote on him.
Good catch.
Right, yeah. I did have him in the consent calendar, and I thought I moved him, but.
It's okay.
But he's not there.
It's okay.
So do you want to?
So I really didn't confuse myself.
No. So do you want to add on Mr. Wood?
Yes, would you just, oh.
Sure, do you have, is it on your paper?
Yeah, we'll just go ahead and do that, I think that's fine. We don't have to amend the agenda.
I move that we appoint Mr. Marty Wood, D., 11 South Glenwood, Gales Ferry, as a regular member to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending October 31, 2021, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Lynch.
Second.
So again, we're moving.
And same words apply.
Yeah.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Okay, so now we are at your next one, number 12.
I move to adopt a proposed authorizing resolution of the Ledyard Town Council, State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, as contained in the draft dated November 6, 2019.
Second.
So this is a program that we operate under every year. This is simply an administration, administrative action to renew it.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move to appropriate the proceeds of the sale of Ledyard Center School in the amount of $500,000 as follows. $60,000, account 210-90305-58291, saleable town property, to reimburse account for costs incurred in sale. $370,000, account number 210-40111-58241, building critical needs. And $70,000, account 210-90305-53342, town green upgrade, to recommend the Town Council to, I'll strike that about recommending the Town Council, and appropriate the proceeds from the sale of the Ledyard Center School.
Second?
Second.
So we sold Ledyard Center School for $500,000. The commission and cost of sale was $60,000. That leaves $370,000 that we're planning to put into building critical needs, and holding $70,000 to make needed upgrades and improvements to the town green, with the departure of the Ledyard Fair and the loss of the school property.
Mayor, could you speak to that a little bit, about what the plans are?
Yeah, so the commission, I think, was $35,000. Then we had the two underground storage tanks that had to be removed by crop, which we took care of. We also had to survey the property, do an easement over it to allow the town to continue use over the southern driveway to the town green property. We also had to survey an area for the SQUAW easement, because SQUAW, as you know, has a well field on the back that sometime in the late 80s, it was established there, and it was to be leased by SQUAW, but that document never occurred. So we had to make sure that was done, because it is a public water supply. So we got those things done as part of the expenses of the transaction. In terms of the town green side of it, there are a number of things that we want to do, including the lighting. So as you, for everybody that attended Trunk or Treat, we saw that we had generator sets with tower lights. Well, we want to put in regular lighting that can be either timed, it'll be partly solar operated, where they, it makes sense to have a solar panel on them, so they won't be wired. You probably saw a lot of the utility poles that were on that property have since been removed, so we don't have that kind of fishing net of wire through there. But areas, the lower parking area with Trunk or Treat, we got a great example or a sampling of how well parking occurred there. There were, what, 1,200 kids, I think, plus or minus, that came through Trunk or Treat. And we actually had parking for as many as 100 additional cars at the bottom. But part of what we need there is lighting. So we need to have some lighting down there. That lighting is going to have to be wired. And what we would like to do is trench that in with a conduit, so it's underground wiring leading to each of the light poles around the perimeter of the parking areas. That was one of the things. The other thing that we want to do as part of this project is do some upgrades to the pavilion, possibly even re-roof that pavilion. It's time for that one. It's kind of come for that. So there's a number of things that have already occurred over there. There's more that we still want to do to continue improving the green, and our feeling was that that kind of spend would be appropriate, and it would really provide a great benefit to the town. You know, the green is already showing what it's going to be. The other big piece of this is that the upper playground area, because it was a school, you couldn't fertilize, you couldn't do a whole lot of things. But now that it is no longer a school, we're going to come in the spring, right after, as soon as we can, and come in and put a layer of topsoil down and seed in hay to get a nice grass base going there. So the green is actually green. So we've got some nice plans. I can provide a copy of the various things that have been done and things that we would like to see done for the December 11 meeting, so you can review that.
That would be nice.
But I think we've got a nice plan to really make that thing work for us.
Which reminds me, when we did the light parade, I remember we were walking together, and you turned your phone on so we could see, because it was so dark.
Yes.
So bring flashlights this time. That might not be a bad idea.
That's true.
Or one of those things on your... That would be a good outfit, actually, little reindeer things with one of those lights.
Certainly these on the sides. So that... Speaking of that light parade, because we don't own the school property anymore, what will probably end up happening is all the floats and everything for the light parade are going to queue up in this parking area and around. And then it will still come out right here on Colonel Ledyard, as it has in the past, but from this side of the road, and then turn right, go down the usual route, and then back up to the town green at the end.
Good. Yes.
A question. Under building critical needs, exactly what is that account? As I look at the $40,000 you had to run out for the floor, does that connect? What exactly is building critical needs?
So the building critical needs is the Public Works Director, Steve Maslin, has put together a very comprehensive list of needs for buildings. Either it includes the Bill Library, it includes public works buildings, Town Hall, the Annex, all things. And I think he runs it out to about 20 years. And it includes things like windows, roofs, HVAC, electrical upgrades, all that type of thing. And there was a pretty comprehensive need. I think it was almost $1 million that he had identified, $900,000 and some thousand dollars. And we hadn't really funded it to that level. So our feeling was this was a good opportunity to get that money into that capital needs plan for funding those critical facilities.
So it boils down to it's really like a lifecycle cost for replacement of structure?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a sustainability effort. It's keeping these buildings up to snuff so that we don't have that surprise of, oh, yeah, by the way.
And a new Town Hall.
Yeah, right, right. Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Roxanne, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move to approve additional appropriations for fiscal year 19 to assign budget amounts to previous Town Council actions, as listed in the attachment.
Second.
So this is end-of-year transfers for things that we did this year. Again, it's just cleaning up from last year.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the role, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.